All right, good evening everyone. We're gonna start our 2019 second budget hearing. If you could raise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united in one mind, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, can we start with roll call?
Yes.
Roll call please, Ms. Vicky.
Hey, Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Rebus.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
And Councilmember Witten.
I'm here.
Southern present.
All right, thank you. Okay, so first off this evening, we have the airport. Special Airport General.
So I think at one point you talked about putting some raises in here, but I talked about taking them out and dealing with them when we do our, do our raises for the county.
That's what we normally do, yes.
Do we still have perf in there or did we remove it?
In my book it has perf. It looks like perf is up a little bit in your...
There is a contingency for 5%, not only in the wages, but all the support line items such as perf and FICA.
So, Vicky, what we're looking at then, a bottom line number with no increases in there is what?
For effort?
Yes.
Why is my number different?
One million, three hundred and fifty thousand and thirty-eight dollars.
Was that an increase to perf? When we're not, why, did you, did you intrinsically add money to perf or?
He submitted it with an increase in perf.
Yeah, if we, the budget is the same as last year, so if we take out the raise, the 5% contingency, it's last year's budget, which was one million...
One, three, four, seven, nine...
So we need to remove the...
That is correct. That's my motion, one, three, four, seven...
Second.
...ninety-eight, whatever last year's was.
We got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
When I talked with Paul today about that, I told him, you know, we'll let you know, you'll probably be here when we do our raises and then we just track.
Yeah, and that's fine.
So airport doesn't have any downtime issues?
No, no, we have such a small force that we keep everything to overtime because we couldn't deal with that.
Make a motion on the hearing, uh, two thirty-eight, five-five-five.
No changes?
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Next up we've got our coroner.
Is he sleeping?
You gonna come down?
Yeah.
Let him bring the...
Wake up!
Mr. Chuck, would you join us, please?
Well, he's only taken away a couple hours of his life, so...
Yeah, but they're entertaining hours with Dan up here.
That's right. I was drawing myself.
All right, so it looks like you've got, uh...
So my budget is pretty much flatlined.
How much they used in, um...
Can I consult him?
In hourly.
Hourly. Can you pull up the hourly? There it is.
So far this year?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-six, six hundred expended.
Okay.
Okay.
So, two thousand, okay, in hourly, fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty so far.
Can I ask how you're gonna save money in the medical and hospital services, the twelve thousand, eight forty-one?
Uh, yeah. Okay. Um, we have some grant money that we are using that is going to save us a considerable amount of money, and I am guessing that it's gonna save us even more than that. But being the first year using it, um, I wanna be conservative and not have to have the next coroner come in here and, uh, have to ask for more money. So I believe after next year, it'll be a little bit more clear how this grant is going to work out, and, uh, it will probably end up saving, I know we did twelve this time, but I think it'll probably save another twenty thousand dollars at the end of the day, so...
Sorry, consultants, that went up just a shade?
Yeah, uh, the autopsies, they go up every year. We get more of them every year and they raise the prices of them every year, so, well, not every year, but pretty close to every year.
Where are we at with that right now, Vicky?
We expended one twenty-seven-ten.
I am going to be guessing that we are real close to, uh...
Chuck, on that hospital services, I noticed in 2017, our expenditures were forty-two thousand, and we're only at thirteen thousand. Is there a large lump sum payout that we do at the end of the year in that?
Yes.
Okay.
There is.
Is it...
Now, the, let me get back to that. Typically, we pay it out at the end of the year. When we took that contract in front of the commissioners, it was requested that we not do that at the end of this year and it go into next year's budget, so... But it has always been paid in a lump sum at the end of the year.
Do you expect those expenses to be similar to what we had in last year?
Yes.
Can you explain why they wanted you to bring, take that into next year?
Bring in what?
Take that expense into next year versus this year?
Um, because we typically, um, had a surplus of money for the tox, so we would pay it in like November or December, even though it was, uh, coming out of two thousand, just for, say, this year, if we were allowed to do it the way we've been doing it, it'd be coming out of two thousand eighteen's budget to pay for all of two thousand nineteen's. We were always paying ahead in case we ever had some type of shortfall.
Do we have a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion at three sixty-five, eight-eight-three.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by...
By saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chuck.
Have a good evening. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Next up we've got weights and measures.
It looks like the, uh...
Motion approved.
Second.
You waited all this time?
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Vicky, I know it's not much, but what have we done to the general, not, it's not gonna introduce you by this. Uh, what have we done to the general fund so far?
It's just a general question. Jimmy, come on now.
Okay, so so far, uh, the general fund, you've cut twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six.
What did she say?
Got it, ma'am.
Cut twenty thousand?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four thousand, yeah.
We gotta go a little bit more.
We got about six hundred and some thousand more to go.
A little ways to go. How you doing, Jimmy?
Now, you're not talking about cut from their proposed budgets. I'm talking about how much have we increased the general fund?
Well, overall, there's been a decrease.
Yeah, well, what's our, what's our overall increase to the general fund been from last year?
Oh, I see, from...
I'm gonna ask, either their dream sheet proposals don't mean anything to me, I wanna know.
Nothing, okay, ma'am.
No. I just wanna know. I wanna know what we've, we know our target, I wanna make sure that we stay.
So you guys are requesting a small hour...
So maybe we do something better, Vicky, at the end of maybe...
How much have you increased, you guys are having?
Maybe before we get to the next, before we get to, to our next one on Wednesday now, maybe give us sort of, this is what you've done, increase the general fund.
Overall, it's been a net decrease to the general fund, so far what you've done from their proposed budget.
Well, I don't care about the proposed budget.
Okay.
I wouldn't, that's a different animal. I'm talking about, we have so much money we can increase based on growth factor and all that kinda business. How much have we eaten into that as we move through each evening?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, so next we've got our veteran service, Mr. Atkinson, how you doing today?
Good evening, councilmembers.
Do you wanna tell us a little bit about what's going on? I know you had some, uh, some changes you wanted to make.
Yes, um, we lost one of our assistant service officers to, uh, NERPC, has a little bit of pain job, and it, uh, it leads him down his career path in the accounting field, so, uh, miss Glenn a lot, and we need to reorganize and, uh, you know, talk about centralizing things for a little bit and part-time up north, so that's where we're at right now.
So I know that, uh, there was some thought or discussion, and then maybe some more thought and discussion about how you would be manning Portage and how you would, so how, your proposal is to do what?
Um, my proposal down the road here, and we need to have the commissioners and the council on board here, is to go ahead and have one full-time director. That way, he's more responsive, uh, through the seven days of the week, through any issues that come up. Also, um, to reflect what's done in the ninety-one other counties, uh, they, they work with one director, one assistant, and one full-time administrative assistant, which is an office manager. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and propose that we do that. It would be an overall savings to the county of ninety-one hundred dollars.
You'd be eliminating two part-time positions, correct?
Eliminating one part-time.
So you're asking, what you, what we have in front of us, though, is not to do that, right?
Correct.
So you wanna, do you wanna redo your proposal and bring it back to us with that in mind?
I would like to do that, sir.
Yeah, 'cause I talked to Commissioner Biggs, and he was under the impression that this was gonna be presented this evening to us, so I think they're aware of that.
Yes, I would suggest maybe, 'cause I wanna see it in written...
Sure.
So maybe you could, instead of us attacking it, how you proposed before, we kinda look at what you're rethinking.
Absolutely. I wanna, you know, answer Sylvia. Um, I would like to go ahead and keep the Portage office, which I think is very valuable to, uh, the North County. I do not wanna, never intended to close that. I temporarily wanted to reorganize and distribute the workload and get on the same page with the three or four of us, and I plan on using the Portage office two to three days a week until we can go ahead and, uh, reorganize and...
How long would it take for you to re, kind of redo this, and can you do it for one of, if we reset your second reading to one of the other nights, can you...
Absolutely, sir.
I mean, Wednesday?
Thursday?
Yes.
We got Wednesday and Thursday. Thursday looks a little busier if you wanna come Wednesday.
Up to you.
I'd rather...
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me what...
I'd rather do it Thursday, if you don't mind. I have a death and family, I will not be here Wednesday, but since we're talking about the Portage office, which I represent, I would like to be in that discussion.
So Thursday.
Yeah, we may back Thursday.
Sure. Do that, and I'll have, uh, another proposal.
Awesome.
So with that being said, though, and I guess we can talk about a little, I mean, how would you, with the Portage office, with a full-time person, a full-time administrative assistant, a part-time person, how would you man that?
I'd keep, uh, the full-time, uh, director down at the, the Velpo office here, of course, and our office manager, which is also accredited to do service, uh, work, and then the part-time individual would be stationed up in Portage, North County.
Part-time, okay.
Right, part-time.
In the meantime, with your limited hours, are you guys posting those online somewhere that these, the veterans can see that for Portage, because you're not gonna be open five days a week?
Well, you haven't, uh, you know, done that yet, but I certainly intend to.
Get it out.
That would be a great idea, absolutely, so...
Thank you.
And thank you for all your hard work.
See you Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, next up we've got soy water. Would you like to join us?
Take the raise.
Hello, Michelle.
Hello.
So where's the increase to this budget? Ain't much.
No.
Eight forty-eight, it looks like. So you have...
Auto truck.
Auto truck.
Right, we have a two thousand and eleven truck, and we had a field day last September, and it poured rain, and as you can imagine, all of our supplies got pretty wet, so we'd like to get a retractable cover for that, and also a tool box, because there's certain tools that, um, our program director carries to the field, the technician, in other words, and, uh, kinda hard to load, unload, and all of that, so that's kind of what we wanted to do. I see you got postage in here, I thought the commissioners did that. Where's that difference? It's always been that line item. Oh, okay. Now, the commissioners do give us the office supply budget. Oh, okay. And, um, I never thought about buying postage, because that's just been a separate line item always. In fact, when I report to the State Board of Accounts, I have to, it's a lot of reports that list postage, so...
So you've already expended your entire postage budget for eighteen? What, what do you do for the rest of the year?
Oh, no, but, well, we have, of course, our fundraisers that we do, so we just draw from our own money. Around our office, we don't come back. If you don't give us, I mean, you give us a certain amount of money, if we use that up, we go to our tree sale money, uh, we've been doing some extra work in the office, up, I've been uploading, uh, contract documents for the federal government, that brings in money to the district, so that's where we get the extra money. Our farmers don't believe in coming back.
I like where you all do this.
Yeah. So it's childlike, you're like, you'll only see me again, uh, when I have any M.I. report or something to share.
I'll make a motion at one-one-one, seven-eight-four. Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions or comments?
We're gonna send you around to the other departments.
Yes, well, that's...
She's like, shift on, she left out of her budget.
Well, that's just the way they operate, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's a good way to operate.
I agree.
Excellent.
Anything else?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up we've got our treasurer.
Motion approved. Oh, it's up a little.
Two hundred dollars up.
Oh, my God.
All right, we got a first, do we have a second?
Looks the same.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Yeah, we got a first and a second. Any questions or comments?
So what's, what's up in this budget?
Office equipment over a hundred, oh, sorry. Not my job again.
Two hundred dollars.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't have a problem, I, I, I'm all for it, I just can't find the two hundred dollars. Oh, there you go. Office equipment over a hundred bucks.
Coffee maker.
It's a big hearing. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
We're talking about a treasurer's coffee maker, we're talking about an assessor's coffee.
Okay, next up we've got T.C.C.R.V.C. tourism. This is the worst acronym, C.C.C.R.V.C. All right. So you guys are going up one hundred and forty-eight, two ninety-nine, correct?
I believe we're going down.
We're going down by four thousand, seven hundred and one dollars.
Where am I?
So we have the same money for the...
Oh, we got different, you didn't change that, did you?
No.
We got different pages. Of course not.
So the new number is what, one-nine-five-seven-seven-fifty?
That's correct.
That's my motion.
Now, the two thousand...
It's one thousand, one million, one...
One, one-nine-five-seven-seven-five-zero, right?
No, that's last year, so it's, uh...
Scroll up, thanks, I can't see that.
Well, then we got something wrong on our...
Because that's not what I have in front of me.
I did have a mess up. We got one-nine-five, so...
We got last year was like, one million, eight hundred and nine, four fifty-one.
All right, I'm sticking with my motion.
What is it?
Scroll down.
So it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand more than last year's, what we show?
No. No, it's down forty-seven hundred.
There it is.
Forty-seven hundred one.
Oh, second, this is wrong.
So this book is wrong, our two thousand adopted, two thousand eighteen...
One-nine-five-seven-seven-five-zero.
That's correct.
That's not the same as that, so I just wanna make sure something's not wrong.
One-nine-five...
My motion's one-nine-five-seven-seven-fifty, I really don't care what's in the book.
Just for the two thousand and eighteen. Yes, that's correct.
That's our twenty-nineteen budget.
We've got a first and a second, anyone have any questions or comments, because mine weren't answering.
Yeah, so, uh, my, uh, mine have, and maybe I missed it, I apologize if I did, so why is the two thousand eighteen, uh, adopted budget different here?
Vicky, can you tell us this, please? Why is the two thousand eighteen adopted budget different in our book than this?
Right, it, um, sounds like there was some kind of a, uh...
Typo.
Uh, miscommunication, maybe.
Well, yeah, Nick, there's no, nothing in there for Nicky. See, do you have longevity's not on, in our book? Is that the last line?
What's the miscommunication?
Yeah, look at the second page.
It's a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Look at Nicky, there's a hundred and forty-three dollars.
Yeah, but what they're asking is the...
Oh, you wanna know why the eighteen's different? I got you.
Where'd you see that? Uh, Jeff, I'm sorry. Second page, there's nothing in all four of those... Oh, make the website...
I think the wrong version got printed up, but what you see on the screen would be the correct.
So let me, yeah, let me just make sure that I under, so, Vicky, what we passed in eighteen is one-nine-six-two-four-five-one, correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
And what my motion is, one-nine-five-seven-seven-fifty, correct?
Yes.
All right. And, that oughta do it.
I think we're on the same page now. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, that's...
They put the wrong ones, Mike, that's, that's your question. Mike, are you satisfied or do you want...
Well, I mean, I'm confused, I am confused as to why the two thousand eighteen adopted budget information isn't correct.
I think Jeff had it hit on the head.
Look on the, look on the screen, on your, on your screen in front of you, Mike. It had all the...
I think they left the...
The thing that happened was, Joy took a version before some of the other changes were updated, so that's why some of the budgets might be, or at least...
Two thousand eighteen shouldn't have changed, though.
I knew it was the last possible one.
Okay, so here's, this, this does, this does bring up a glaring bigger concern, so not just this budget, but, so when we went through these books, uh, is there some indication that they're wrong?
Seems like it.
So here's the, so, you said you downloaded...
The thing was, we had everything inputted into Laos by the departments except for certain ones like T.C.C.R.V.C., 'cause you're not on the Laos system, and before your books got printed up, some various different adjustments remained, last minute changes. I had no idea of that.
Let her finish, Joy. Finish, Vicky.
Finish. Oh, dear, and I can't speak to exactly what version was printed up, but it, let's just say that it is correct now with what you're seeing on the screen.
Yeah, all right. And then, Vicky, are you confident that all the other, to Dan's point, are you confident that all the other two thousand adopted, two thousand eighteen adopted budget information we've been looking at is the actual two thousand eighteen adopted budgets?
What we have on our screen, yes. I did not go through all of the books, we didn't print these out, so it was what was downloaded from the Laos system. We can print it up, your office can print it up.
And we've been checking, I mean, I think...
Yeah, so far I haven't seen anything, I've been checking it myself, first one. So when it's down, we gotta check the screen. My motion stands, so we're gonna put a vote on that?
We didn't...
Got a second.
We were just seeing if anyone else had questions. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion has, motion carries, excuse me.
Are we done?
You're done.
If you could just wait till the end of the meeting.
Next year, you're not coming back. Raisers and problems.
Now, we're moving. We have the assessor.
Now we're on the normal assessor.
Motion to deny.
Vicky, uh, Vicky, any chance of bringing the assessor's budget up here? We have more questions, I always did.
I can kinda explain something, there's certain accounts in the P.C.C.R.V.C. budget that's not in the Laos system, so there had to be a manual update to it.
Awesome.
Somehow there may have been a...
That sounds good, can we have that assessor's budget?
We're bored out of here.
I know. That's enough. Bye. Have a good night, that makes sense, Vicky, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. John, what have we got going on?
Hi, guys, John. Good evening. Thanks for volunteering your time and being here late, guys, appreciate it.
It's my pleasure, so your budget stays the same for the general fund, eight oh one eight thirty-one, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
My, I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, for a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Scroll down to the bottom of the reassessment.
Motion carries, to be sure about that.
Oh, no, go, man, I'm doing my thing. Reassessment.
Reassessment, we have some changes, um, the main...
What's in reassessment right now?
In the funds.
It's not like the same, right? No, but what's in the, what's in that fund right now?
In the fund, right now, cash balance is two hundred and twenty-three thousand and eighty-two dollars.
So we started what, the year with?
Uh, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven thirty-two.
Whoa, all right. Okay, cool, could you tell me, right?
Yep. We share that with Portage, and I, I think that we've got, uh, contracts that'll be paid out by the end of the year. We don't normally, anything, if I remember this budget right, Vicky, uh, whatever cash we save rolls into the next year, so it, um, it's not like the general fund, it doesn't just go back, it doesn't revert back, so we like to try to not overspend it.
That's correct, yes.
So the, yeah, the largest change that I'm aware of is the, um, what we call the stipend for level one, or, I'm sorry, level two, level threes, um, the county for, since I've been here, has paid a thousand dollar stipend for the level two, a thousand dollar stipend for the level three, and, um, we're asking, um, that that can be increased to two thousand dollars for a level two and three thousand dollars for a level three, so we're asking for a slight increase to encourage our employees to, um...
Contractual services?
No, that's not, that's not contractual services.
That would be...
Yeah, I see decreases, I don't see increases.
It is in the salary line item, so it's not included in your budget right now, because that's listed under special raise request.
Oh. So where is the request? Take out raises for a moment, John, and let me talk about what other things you're looking to...
We just split some money around from out of, I believe, out of consultants into contractual services, just as some housekeeping.
So where is the request? Take out raises for a moment, John, and let me talk about what other things you're looking to-
We just split some money around from out of, I believe, out of consultants into contractual services, just as some housekeeping. We reduced some money in the, um, office supplies line.
Awesome. I'll make a motion, it's four sixty-one, seven forty-two.
Got a motion? We got a second?
I think that contractual services could be used.
Thank you, sir.
Is that attorney, attorney fees, contractual services?
We do pay some out of there, and we also have, um-
It's not one lawyer.
No.
Because that'd be the job I want.
Right.
It's a joke.
I hope we're not going to bankrupt.
Yeah.
So the contractual services, that's all lawyers?
No, no ma'am. In fact, the commissioners pay most of our lawyer fees at this time, but every once in a while, we have to dip into the fund, pay our own attorney for certain-
What do you use contractual services for? Give us a couple of examples real fast, I think is what everybody's asking.
Right, so we have somebody who comes and measures our properties professionally. We have-
Like maybe a four-D building?
Yes, yes, that would come out of contractual. Um, we have some help with, um, appeals, um, our models that we use for assessing, things like that, come out of there.
And this fund is obviously-
Sorry, Sylvia?
No, not rent, he's, he was saying to measure the four-D building.
Oh, oh, fine, fine.
Jeremy has thrown around a lot.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, kind of a, uh, alignment question, really. Um, and it ties into the Portage Township Assessor. John, can you just explain to me, so I understand it?
Yes.
As we look at assessment specialists, and we look at, uh, is there a difference between an assessment specialist three in Portage Township versus an assessment specialist three in your office? In terms of duties, responsibilities, et cetera?
Do you need Alt to-
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, I would say that there is, only because in the county level, we have differences of-
Okay.
Of job descriptions, let's say. Um, we handle more volume at the county. As far as technically speaking, probably not, so it's kind of a double answer there, and I'm not trying to be misleading, I'm just saying, um-
So did you hear the question you asked?
Okay.
Yeah, as far as that, um-
That's a good question.
The only difference I can think of is that his staff is cross-trained, where mine is, we do just about everything, um, as far as like home homes, um, commercial sales, everything that's involved in the office, we are cross-trained, where I don't know if his office is.
Well, then his shouldn't pay more, then yours should pay more. Then yours should pay more.
It does.
But then I don't know if, um, you know, that one's supposed to be like someone just only does commercials, you know, and residential.
Sorry, John.
I think that the county adopted, uh, county assessor's office, seven or eight years ago, adopted, and as part of restructuring, our, our own job descriptions that were separate and different from the Portage Township Assessor's description. So if you were to look at the two, you're gonna see some differences. But I think fundamentally speaking, there are, the, the level two, uh, assessment specialist two takes the same classes as the two from Portage, or the three here, the same as Portage. So there's a lot of similarities too.
Intuitively, it seems like there should be an alignment between those, um, those positions.
Well, I think you're asking, do you want to cut your employees' pay, or do you want to-
Yeah, intuitively, yes, but like I said, the county assessor has responsibility for things that the township assessor does not, such as exemptions, inheritance, which is kind of phasing out, but, um, appeals and types of-
What about the sheer volume, is there a difference, John?
Yeah, and there's a volume difference, yes.
And appeals there.
And parcels.
Okay.
So I mean, we, we could, I mean, Alta and I could talk about, um-
It was just really a question of alignment. Would it make sense to do that or whatever?
And we have talked about this, actually, not, you know, we have talked about alignment type things. I just don't know if there's a one-size-fits-all between the county and the township, but we could try to get that.
Seems like workload would be a place to start, what's the, what's the typical workload of each employee, and then you could at least figure out some kind of fair pace.
Okay, well, something-
Any further questions?
Okay, the raises are taken out.
Yep.
Okay.
So when the raises are coming, I'm sorry, can I, can I say something?
No, we're about to take a vote.
If the raises are coming out, um, these are, so you're treating them the same, that they're out of different budgets, obviously, they're not impacting the general fund. So we're, is there a way to-
We're not removing them, we'll just discuss-
We're taking care of most of them.
So you don't really need me to explain it, then, just kind of let it sit here.
At some point, we'll-
Okay. So I had a nice explanation.
You might forget by then, so just wait, we got a lot going on.
Well, I just wish you would remember, if you blankly decide one way or the other, that at some point, we could have a chance to-
It's a case by case basis.
Yeah.
I don't perceive it as a blanket decision.
I would suggest you being in the front row, then, with over raises, salaries.
The first one to speak.
Understood. I just, I just wanted some clarity, maybe I missed an email or something.
Well, we're trying to figure out, and honestly, I know you, you're proposing a non-general fund increase, but the fact of the matter is, we're, we're trying to figure out if we do all of the stuff that state mandated increases, inflationary increases, what we really have left available to do raises. And then we're, we're gonna back, back into that, and then certainly, any particularity that you, you know, some might have, like you, kind of gave us a real quick version, but we'll get the long version from you.
Very good.
That was one of, that was one of the reasons.
I want to take up, uh, let you know about the level three. In order to change, change the real estate, not mobile homes, or personal property, change the real estate assessment, they have to deal level three. So if that's what aligns, the difference between the level two and the level three.
I don't think that's what his question was.
No, it was between level three to level three.
Yeah, he was talking, he was thinking a level three in one office and a level three in another office.
And I think the only reason we brought that up is, you know, when we're looking at budgeting, it would help to know, to help you guys to adjust the budget salary-wise.
I think historically speaking, something I just thought of, for, for you two, Mr. Justin, is that the county assessors' salaries have always been just a click, a tick higher than the township assessor's salaries. I think these things have already been discussed, and we're happy to do it again, but I think it's for those reasons that we already talked about. And Alta's probably wanting to get these things balanced out too, it's just, it's just a tough, it's just a tough one, so.
Okay.
But it's the way it is.
Awesome. Anyone else have anything? Hearing nothing, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Okay, next up, we got Ms. Alta.
And speaking of Alta, Portage Township Assessor. Alright, so you, like you're saving money on the first one, huh?
Is my book rate?
Seven.
Yeah. So you're taking down, you're, you're taking down a little bit out of the dues and subscriptions, is that correct?
Yes, because I no longer have, um, the LoopNet, it's commercial, finding out, uh, commercial sales.
Looks like-
They discontinued it.
Okay, and you're taking down travel a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
The training and education, seven thousand.
Why are you getting rid of that?
You're wiping it out?
Well, because we don't pay for the classes. The state does. It's paying for the, some of the classes, like for the level three and the level two, is what, uh, we just consider it travel, we just pay for mileage, hotel, food for that, and conference. So that's mostly for my conference and one-day classes. The training and education was for, um, beyond the level three classes, the IAAO courses, they're one week long, if you go out of state or anything, or, um, out of town.
So your number's two, two twenty-three, one twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We got a first, do we have a second?
Second.
First and second. Any further questions?
Uh, you're also requesting some raises, which we'll address.
Yes. The other, only other question I have was, do we need to go back and cut the thirty-eight-five out of John's training?
Vicki, can you be quiet? I would too. Okay, so, uh, anyone else have anything from Alta? Hearing none, uh, nothing, please, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the Portage Township reassessment, seven eighty-eight.
And we'll be discussing that then at the end, right?
The special salaries, yep.
Yes.
And then we got, on our book, we have Perth and FICA.
Right.
So we're gonna remove those.
That depends on-
That depends on the raises, so really.
Can we just do the motion on the seventy-two oh fourteen for now, then?
Is that your motion? We have a second? You mean to keep it the same as last year, seventy-two, fourteen?
Second.
You have a second? Any other questions?
The, uh, question I have is, based on what I'm seeing here, two thousand eighteen adopted budget, seventy-two thousand, and we've already spent seventy-seven thousand. Is that accurate?
For Portage, I don't know how much we spent, um, this year already.
You have a second, bud?
It's a recessment.
That's a forty-three assessment.
We have spent seventy-seven already? I don't-
Yes.
So you're, do you come in front of us for an additional?
No, you, I had, oh, I'm sorry, I did not include the twenty-seven thousand that you gave me earlier this year, for the additional. So I spent twenty-seven thousand more, but I did not include that in here, because I don't-
Hundred and four total?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Sounds like we're right on target, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you, Jeff.
Hey, let me, let me back up on that for a second.
Yeah, because we're gonna, that's a hundred and five thousand, we just approved a budget for seventy-two thousand.
Right. So what's the disconnect?
What did you need that additional for? Remind us.
One-time.
Is there one-time purchase that you're not gonna anticipate having in nineteen, are you?
No, because when we had, um, policy analyst, uh, come do our commercial reassessment, I was not involved in that contract at the time. So he presented me the bill at one time for the whole four years, he presented me forty-seven thousand, and I only had twenty. So I had come to you with extra twenty-seven thousand, but we talked about it, and I told him, can't you have that, so.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thanks, Tom.
Next up, we have a recorder this evening.
Me.
Welcome back. Welcome back. I didn't have hair like that. When I had hair.
Those were the days.
So it looks like the, uh, the general fund one is not increasing, neither is the other one, which has zero in it.
I'm gonna make a motion on the general fund, uh, two thirty-seven, five seventy-five.
Second.
Yeah. And your, what, your other one's the same too?
Uh, the perpetuation fund is up a little bit, only because of-
Zero, do we have a vote on that?
Well, we have one. Well, there's also the redaction fund.
Yeah.
We're not doing, I'm not doing anything with that.
Is that the identify security?
Yes, that's the identification security fund. Um, that fund got real low a few years back, just trying to build up a little bit. So on that one, submit a zero budget for that one.
I'll, I'll prove that, I'm, I'll include that in my motion.
Okay.
The second will concur with the first.
So does anyone else have any questions? On these two? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I have it.
So, on the perpetuation?
Uh, it's increased about six, almost, well, exactly six thousand dollars, um, put in for a thousand dollars for training, education, which we didn't have last year. I came back for an additional for that, I figured just put it in there now and get it done with. Uh, asked for an additional of, or increased maintenance agreements by five thousand, and that's part of the project that was, um, authorized earlier this evening. We are purchasing a book scanner, and part of that's gonna be a maintenance, additional maintenance agreement that we haven't had in the past.
I'll make a motion at the two ten, three fifty-six.
Uh, first, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions or comments?
I see in twenty-seventeen, John, we were about ten thousand under the maintenance agreements, or we, twenty-eighteen, we're flipping along at about six, almost seven thousand more.
Well, before, um, that redaction fund, fund eleven sixty, used to pay all the maintenance agreements out of that. And that got very, very low, so I transferred some, that's why we've, we've assumed some of those now to the perpetuation fund.
Do you have a second on that?
We did, yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Great evening.
Thank you.
Take care, John. Next up, we've got the, the IT budget.
It's a big budget.
Uh-oh.
So we got a lot of questions. First of all, I, I've heard a lot of departments telling us that they're getting more IT stuff moved to their budget, for example, juvenile services, they're gonna be taking care of some of their stuff. When that happens, I expected us to get money back from you. Does that not happen? I mean, what happens when you take stuff off your books, or workload off your people and give them to another department? Shouldn't we get something back?
You're talking about Quest.
Yeah, that's one example, yes.
Quest is going to the cloud in January, probably January the first. The reason I can't give them money back, because they've been running on my server, which is obsolete. I would have to spend another forty-two thousand next year if I wanted to replace the server. So I had conversations with Chris Byer and the Quest, uh, people from Quest, um, we all came to the decision that, in the long run, it'd be better for Quest if it was in the cloud.
But you're saving money, correct? Because you're not having to upkeep the server. What they told me is there was a lot, maybe twenty-five hundred dollars or something worth of work going on with the server at times.
Those maintenance we pay on that is anywhere from three thousand, four thousand dollars.
Okay, so do we get that back?
Yep.
I mean, that's in here, that's reflected. I'm just asking, does that come back to us, or do you just keep that in your budget when you push it to another department? Because that's what, that's-
I understand. I could probably give that back to you out of my maintenance agreements, that's what it's paid on.
That doesn't sound like much, but it is in the long run, so.
So just an overall question on how that works, thank you. Um, so you wanna talk about the big-
Data processing equipment. So we've expended in two thousand eighteen about five hundred eleven thousand, and you're looking for eight hundred thousand for next year. We adopted two hundred thousand for eighteen to begin with, and I know we've had this protracted conversation about that over the year, but it's a pretty big increase.
Last, last budget hearing, we sat down and we talked about a two-year plan that we were gonna put together, that for twenty eighteen, we're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars toward the IT structure upgrade, and push the other five hundred thousand back to twenty nineteen. The twenty nineteen one is the one that, um, I'm planning on doing all my server upgrades, which is a really critical part of this. Is there anything you can do to that? Yeah. Can we get that number down? Because you, you know what kind of trouble we're in, what we're trying to do. Well, the other thing, the other problem is that-
Last year, they have, go back to the commissioners and try and find that funding for that.
That was brought up, you're right.
This is just a capital expenditure to upgrade your-
That's what I'm thinking.
I, I mean, put it in-
Put it in the general budget, just to-
Yeah, I mean, we're, I think it's our, our job to find a, for somebody's request, if they're one-time capital expenditures, I don't know if they belong to here.
In the general fund.
Yeah, as ongoing, basically ongoing, what appears as basically ongoing operating expenses. So, I, I would recommend taking that out and looking at lit, unallocated lit, CCD. Um, I don't know.
So here's what I would like to do. I would like to table this until such time that we can get, I mean, and I did tell Laura it was okay, I got it, I mean, it's not, this isn't indictment on the commissioners, but I think we probably do need them here. I think we probably, if we're gonna be looking at alternative funding sources, that's not your-
No.
That's not your issue.
Because I, I'd like to wrap both of those, I mean, if we're talking about two years of expenses here, why wouldn't we wrap both of those up in one funding source? I'm not sure why we try and stretch that out and make us go through a monotonous task of trying to, you know, fit in another three, four hundred thousand dollars, or five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we could either have the commissioners come back with them, or we could take it out of this budget and tell the commissioners to find us another source.
We're looking at, you said you think we can increase our budget by one point two million dollars comfortably, this expenditure alone is half.
Not comfortably.
That was the topic, comfortably was the million.
Correct.
So we took it as comfortable.
What do we look at, Don, is this a two-year, this is a two-year plan, right?
This is the second year of the two-year.
My raises still in here.
And did you say, Don, that the second year was only for five hundred thousand dollars? And is there a reason why it's budgeting at eight hundred, under?
Um, in first week of January, we took over the IT responsibilities for the nine-one-one center.
Yeah.
In the first week of March, we took over the IT responsibilities for the sheriff's department. Did they give you money back? They don't have any money to spend.
So-
Why not?
Vicki, on this proposed salaries, this is just taking on new people, this isn't any raises, right?
No, no, that's, that's, those represent the changes that were made earlier this year, so we have to build them into the budget, because that's what we're paying right now.
So we've taken over the nine-one-one IT stuff and the jail?
Correct.
And have, has, so my question is the same question that was just asked. So do we see then that, are we gonna take that up in the other budgets?
We need to take it from the sheriff and give it to him.
Yeah, are we gonna, since, since we're apparently moving personnel over to his budget?
Um, we moved that IT from the commissioners' budget, and when, I believe it was commissioners, because that IT person was in their budget, so when we get to the commissioners, you will see that reduced.
Dollar for dollar reduction.
They're trying to get somewhere else, though.
The sheriff also?
Yeah, can we guarantee no spending?
That's the problem, that's the hard part to tell.
We, if, okay, whatever salary changes were approved during the course of the year, this is updated. Because if, say, let's say that somebody added a person, it's in this budget.
So outside of the salaries?
They did reduce it.
What are you thinking we need for just capital improvements? I guess that would be my question, outside of salaries.
Well, that's the forty-five hundred, forty-five one hundred fund is what I was looking for, for the capital improvements.
He's talking about the eight, about the eight hundred thousand.
The five hundred thousand of that is what I wanted to spend from, from day one, from the first one. The other three, three hundred thousand of that is, is what I came with, I came up with, because of the audit that we did at the sheriff's department. I'm looking at about three hundred thousand dollars to get them up to today's standards. That's where the other three hundred thousand came in.
Okay. I would like us to look, I, I know the commissioners are gonna present what might or come, I, I would like us to look at knocking that number down, what has to be done, what doesn't, you know, what's not gonna kill you to not get done this year, that's, that's a lot of money, in my opinion.
Well, I went through that. Um, there's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred hours I can remove.
That you could what, remove?
Yeah. It's gonna put a, kind of a bind on certain things, but if we have to push that part of it back, we have to push it back.
Like what? What do, how can you just remove that amount? From what? What upgrades would I have to get?
I removed, I removed-
That's a great sell.
Go ahead.
I removed service from the one fifty-seven Franklin. I removed service from the jail that I was originally gonna install out there. I've got equipment racks I can eliminate. I've got switches I can eliminate, I have access points I can eliminate.
See, here's the thing-
Can I have a question?
No, I, here's the thing, before, I'm sorry, Jeff, but before we start doing all that stuff-
Right, right, that one too.
I wanna know, I guess I want the commissioners here, and I wanna know, I wanna break out of the things, and I, and I really want you to give us a needs versus wants, break out of this, and then what we're left with, I wanna ask the commissioners what other funding sources they might suggest we pay for these things with.
And along, and along that line, Dan, I'm thinking, if you're talking about the new nine-one-one center, that infrastructure should come with the building. I mean, we should, that should be included in the construction cost of that structure. So I'm, I'm wondering why they're trying to come out of the general fund. That's really my-
Yeah, we're not ready for this conversation yet.
Right.
I think we're all thinking, right?
I mean, it goes back to what we asked, asked earlier, where are we at with the capital funding? Is there a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Exactly.
That's a good question.
That, that, that infrastructure should be included in that bid. There's no question about it.
Let's, uh, let's, let's, let's move this, yeah, let's move this down the road a little bit.
It's not a, we're not condemning you, Don, at all.
We're not trying to figure out-
They're gonna hit you when you need to.
I could.
No, no, it's fine.
So even if you and the commissioners-
We wanna give it all to you, but we wanna find, Allen should be, I mean, because this hurting everybody else in the department, it's gonna be a big all-out, it's gotta be one of these days.
She's gonna check with you and the commissioners to see what date works for you guys, and then let us know.
Well, we're still gonna discuss it.
I would, I would rather, I would rather imagine that on second reading of the lit plans, we will see, uh, a commissioner tonight. I got a better idea. Why don't we just set this guy for Thursday, October eleventh, and we tell the commissioners, that's when it's gonna roll, one of them can be here.
Well, no, no, remember, the dates have changed.
No, this is the new one.
This is updated?
Eleven sixteen.
No.
You don't have the newest one.
Okay.
This is an update.
So I may ask you a question. Are the lit plans on October eleventh?
I have this one.
If the answer is yes, I, my suggestion is to have them come back on that day.
Yeah, yeah, we moved it to eleven.
Moved.
Some of them. This is gonna be a global conversation.
Actually, I have the ITS print shop. Do we wanna go over my other things, other than forty-five one hundred?
Not yet. We'll, we'll talk about it all then.
Yeah, this is-
Because it may have some impact on it. Where, where are we going to?
Now we're on the ITS print shop general fund.
Excuse me, point of order, um-
Oh, yeah, we're on one.
Yeah, for right now, do we keep that in, this budget for right now?
Want to table that? You gonna motion to table?
We'll table it. But we table it.
I don't think we need a moat.
Yeah, we keep it in. Yes, we'll just-
Yeah, just move it on, just move it on down the road, we'll be able to-
Kick it, kick that can.
Leave it in the budget for now.
Right, okay, right.
Next up, we've got the print shop, looks like it's increasing three thousand dollars, printing other than office supplies.
Let's, uh, change that back to last year's budget.
I'll make a motion at sixty thousand, two ten.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, what?
We just kept the same budget as last year.
I know, but, did I hear somebody say the other day that the print shop was down for like three weeks or something?
Yeah, it was behind by three weeks.
Behind?
And they ran out of ink.
Ran out of toner. Our color, our color copier is old. We got bids for, we're gonna replace it this year, the commissioners didn't want to replace it this year. How much are you talking about? How much? I don't remember now.
I'm just wondering, can we buy you the printer and then get better one?
Well, I had one other question along the printer conversation, is, it's like the extension office, and even our printer, in our, in our facility, shouldn't that come under your department? I mean, the infrastructure for those is tied in with everything else in IT. I'm not sure we shouldn't be purchasing that stuff through the IT, your IT should be accessible to that and not have us buying it.
Was it because of lease agreements? The commissioners are signing them?
Yeah, this is the way it works. The departments come to me when they want to upgrade their copy machine, I go out and get three companies to come in to talk directly with that department head.
So the extension, extension did that already?
They never talked to me.
Okay, that's another reason I don't approve that.
All the, all the departments talk to me.
Okay.
And once we get the bids in, and they pick the one that they want, and I get on the commissioner's agenda to get the contracts signed.
Okay.
They pay for the copy machine, and the departments pay for the maintenance.
I'm glad to hear that because we were presented a product that was about six thousand dollars and had about a two hundred and fifty dollar a month maintenance agreement.
Did you hear what he said? The commissioners paid for it.
Right, right, but that's what I'm saying.
Interesting, yeah, good call.
So, all right, thanks, Don, appreciate it. That's good information.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Well, I guess to just finish what I, so it's down for weeks because you're waiting on ink, because...
Well, the reason we're waiting on ink is we have a very old machine, there's not that many in production anymore, so they're, they've, um, cut back on the toners that they make.
And the commissioners didn't want to approve purchasing a new up-to-date one.
Have you asked for it?
Have I what?
Have you asked for a new printer?
Yes.
That's all, okay.
We're just wondering, if we come back to revisit all this, we can...
Can you put that together, of what it would cost to replace the one we currently have, so we can kind of look at that with this general fund issue?
Yeah.
I mean, why not include?
Why not roll it in at the five, ten grand?
Right, why not include it? I mean, at this point, we got to find funding anyway, so, at least we know what we're talking about, so we're not held up for weeks at a time when...
I've got the quote, I mean, I can give you what I...
How much production do you have coming out of the print shop? I mean, when it's down for three weeks, what are we doing to come in government, pushing one after the other?
I don't, I don't know where this three-week thing came from, but, uh, I would have noticed.
That was, that was for, that was for the person that wanted to buy the printer, I think.
They might have, yeah.
I would have known the shop manager was doing three weeks, so I don't believe that.
All right, uh, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll see you again about Thursday.
I would have to ask you to come back.
Two Thursday, two Thursday.
Is Pete saying?
Yeah, up here. Oh, I can't see that one. Todd, there, man, this is the big one.
And we pulled it one.
And I'm going.
I'm going.
Do we have to hear this?
Yeah, they've got, they've got the money. Wait, she's saving money, I'm staying for this one.
Yeah, he said she was saving money.
That's what I'm staying for.
Okay, so, so far, the amount that you cut from the proposed general fund budgets,